Welcome to the first town hall of 2025. This is your opportunity to ask questions and speak to the board. Ladies and gentlemen, we got another meeting coming, so thank you. This is your opportunity to interact with O'Conne County Board of Commissioners and talk about things you're interested in. As usual, we have something we're interested in, want to share with you. So we're going to ask Cindy to come up and talk to us, get it started.
Still working on our visual. I need to speak out. And how do you want me to? I feel like when I introduce myself to y'all, y'all know who I am. So I'm Cindy Pritchard, and I'm the Executive Director of Keep O'Conne County Beautiful. And I have been given the opportunity to speak to you about our invasive removal workday program that we are six years in on. I saw Lisa, I'm not sure if she's still in the back, but she can attest, we thought this was going to be a four-year project. And it keeps growing, no matter what we do, it keeps growing. So as a Keep America Beautiful affiliate, we're charged with eliminating litter, improving recycling, and continuing to beautify our communities. And so this is what we work on every day. It's based in education and in hands-on events and programs. And so the invasive removal program came about as we were working on a tree inventory, which was a culmination of a partnership, working UNG students as volunteers in what we do in the community, and a professor there who was trying to develop an app. And so what we did was, we got permission from Parks and Rec to go in and do a tree inventory. And so we took three days, and we took volunteers into Herman C., OVP, Bogart Sports Complex, and Heritage Park. And on the third day, when we were at Bogart, a woman came up to me and said, "There's a terrible invasive problem at Heritage Park, and Lisa needs to do something about that." And so I said, "Well, you know, tell me more. What can we do?" And so she told me what was there and what they had discovered in it. And it was an invasive that she did not know the name of, and it was impeding on the trails and beginning to interfere with a safe horse riding. And so what I suggested was that she take that invasive and go off and figure out what it is and what we could do about it. And then we could get back together and determine a plan, how we might partner and who those partners might be. So she started at the Botanical Gardens, who identified it as Eliagnus. It's an autumn olive. And they sent her to the Athens Land Trust, who had, at that time, an invasive removal grant. And it had an employee. And so that's how we started. Athens Land Trust had someone who could come out. They had the tools, they had the supplies. I went and did an educational training at UGA with Gary Kreider, who's an invasive removal specialist, and we learned all about it. And so then what we did was, we called out to the volunteers and we figured who we could get together. And so it was a partnership between Athens Land Trust, O'Conne Parks and Rec, Keep O'Conne County Beautiful, the Kelmac Saddle Club. Jean was a member of the Saddle Club. And along the way, we've picked up a few more. Now the Parks Foundation is a part of it as well. And so what we did was, we identified what needed to be eradicated at Heritage Park. And I do have the board in the back of the room, we're trying to get it up on the screen. But we identified in the area what all needed to be done and how we were going to go about doing that. You have to work on eliminating the invasive removals in the fall. And so we chose dates every two weeks, from the first of September through the end of February. And you do that because what we were doing is cutting and specifically spraying. I will quietly say, yes, we are using a chemical, everybody knows that. We don't try to harp on that a whole lot. Chemicals were made for these specific purposes. We've been trained in how to do it. We train all of our volunteers in how to do it. And it is very effective. And so we just called out, you know, to volunteers to come. The first year, we did it on Tuesday, let's see, what did we do? Not sure if we had a Tuesday and a Saturday. Anyway, what came about was that the majority of our volunteers were either retired, and somehow we found, either in the forestry field, DNR, you know, something that was sort of related. Those people have come to us, and it's been our horse people that have been solid. They're users of the park, and they have a very vested interest in making sure that those invasives were removed. We found probably, I'd say, upwards of 100 acres was autumn olive in the park. And what happened is, that spread by birds eating the seeds, and then, you know, and they get spread. And then it found a great place to grow, and there's a lot of woods where there are no trails out there. Now, this time of year, you know, you can see, you look up the levels, and you see the next level up on the next trail. But it grew in there, you know, unrestrained for years and years and years. And so we have some stumps that are even that big that we're cutting. And so we use hands-to-haul, hand saws, we use nippers, we use battery-powered saws to cut and treat. And so we went along, and we did year one, and we made great progress. And we did year two, and we did year three. And then Gary started saying, "You know, we need to go back and look at what we've cut to see if any of us come back and what we might do." And so this year, so he's been after us, "Start using some folular spray." You know, "You have to do it in August." Well, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not big on being in those woods in August. There's big snakes on the Appalachian River. So we didn't start in August. And then he kept saying, "You need to do this, you need to do this." And so we've been able to come up with some newer improved methods. If we were using what we're using now in year one, we probably would have been done in year four. But we didn't know that, and we have some new things going. We're now using bigger sprayers that we can do folular spray. You can only do that while the leaves are on, and you have to start in August, so there's a time limit there. Then you can only do it at certain temperatures. Same with the cut and spray. You're doing it when the sap is down. And you have to be able to identify it, because now it basically has no leaves left on the branches. And so we've come to know, we recognize those skeletons in the woods, and we know exactly what we're, you know, what we're cutting and treating. We've also started with a new method this year called a basal bark treatment, where you can go along on those bigger stumps that were taking more of our time to cut and move that out of the way, and you literally are using backpack sprayers, and you're spraying six inches down all the way around. And we were very excited to report that, two weeks after that first application, when we rounded a curve to check on it, you could see that all of those leaves were yellow. So that is very definitely making a big dent in what's in there. What Gary reminded us was, as many of our invasives are, well, I mean, they're not native. And so what happens is, there's not a native caterpillar to them. And so when birds nest there, there's no caterpillars for them to feed the babies. And so what happens is, you're creating a food desert for the birds and other wildlife. And so the babies may be born, but they struggle to make it. They struggle to live, because the birds are having to fly farther and farther. And so we have noticed over the years, the sounds of the birds have returned, you know, deep in the woods in Heritage Park. And it really is a beautiful thing. We encourage anybody who wants to come out and help us, you know, to come out and see what it's about. We have two more. We have two more workdays in February. Our March workday will just be kind of a synopsis. We're going to go back, look at what we did, mark the areas to target next spring, next fall, when we start again, to see what we're doing. Some of our volunteer successes are, Jean did get an award, a volunteer award for this project through Athens Land Trust in the first year. We also, Lisa, Parks and Rec were able to submit a volunteer year award for a man named Jim, who came to help us and has been helping us for several years. And he was one of the ones that found us one day, as he was walking, exercising, as he does on a regular basis at Heritage Park, asked us what we were doing, and then asked if he could join us. So we've had several volunteers that have joined us that way. So it's been a great program, but what it's done is, it's allowed us to address something that needed to be addressed, using partners, bringing those funds in, and thereby freeing up Parks and Rec to do the many other things that they have to do on other properties that they work on. So it's also led to great partnerships and opening up avenues with other groups. We've also identified, you could put your blinkers on and only see what you want to see. We all know about Privet, we all know about English Ivy, we know about those things that are out there. We have some calorie payers out there. I don't know if you're familiar, but the state of South Carolina has banned them. There is actually a bounty on them now. For everyone you turn in, you can get a sampling of something else to plant. So they're very destructive. We have some trees of heaven, and that is directly related to the spotted lanternfly, which they're trying to make sure does not invade Georgia, because that would be devastating to the agriculture community. So what it's done, again, is open up some opportunities. We're getting ready to partner with Athens Clark County to do some education in February on Invasive Species Awareness Week, so that we can encourage people to, you know, eradicate it if it's in your yard, because what's happening is, the birds are eating the seeds from your yard and spreading them in these places. And then when they grow unchecked, you end up with a problem like we have. So I will say, when you hear Eliagnus, if you're like me, at first you thought of the Eliagnus that has the thorn, which is what I have in my yard. But thank goodness, autumn olive does not have that brutal thorn that if you've cut any of the other down, you know, it's not a good thing. But anyway.
What about sweet gums? Do you got anything to kill them?
We don't have a current program for sweet gums right now. But that's not out of the realm, because Gary Kreider, who we work with on many of these projects, is very passionate. And yeah, if he was in this room and you asked that question, yeah, so.
Got some he can work on.
Right, right. You know, we all have some. That's a problem, though, you know, if they get out there, and again, they get in these areas and they're unchecked, and their growth just goes rampant. It does create ecological, you know, issues. And so it's been a great program, it's really fun. I know that people probably already know this, but Heritage Park is amazing, it's beautiful. It is not what I consider a job when you're out there eradicating invasives. It's just a beautiful morning in the woods, in all temperatures. We've seen all kinds of animals, you know, it's really, it's a beautiful place. And I feel like our community wants to, they have a vested interest in it, and they're willing to, you know, they're willing to contribute to that. So, yeah, we could, we could start marking sweet gums, but we would get bogged down, I think.
Thank you so much. Any questions from commissioners on this? Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, so I'll be in the back if anybody has any questions or anybody wants to volunteer. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is now yours. We asked that when you come up, you state your name and where you live, and fire away.
I just wanted to dispel the awkwardness, nobody coming up to talk, you know, just being so shy. And I normally am, but I'm not going to be tonight. I'm back again about our elections, okay? Just because the results changed from a year ago in terms of party, I don't think it means anything has been corrected. I follow the elections very, very closely. I'm a member of several groups in the National Election Integrity Network. There's also a local group here in the state of Georgia. So I'm pretty much kept up to date on what's happening. And the 2024 election was not without problems. And comparing the 2024 election with the 2020 election, I don't know if you've all had a chance to see the graphs of the total votes that were cast. The level was kind of even for 2016, 2018, 2022. But for 2016, 2020, no, in 2020, the number of votes cast nationally was like 17 million more than what was cast nationally in the previous presidential elections, as well as this election. So somewhere, almost 20 million votes showed up that did not show up this time and were not cast in 2016. And of course, we know at that time in 2020, there was mass mail-in ballots. And to this date, there is evidence in Fulton County that tens of thousands of invalid ballots were cast in Fulton County. There was a lawsuit pretty early on, and we have yet to see those ballots. And when you think about it, there are court cases still going on that are persecuting people here in Georgia who stood up for election integrity. The RICO suit being filed by Fulton County against President Trump, and I believe 17 other, 17 or 18 other innocent people, including lawyers who came out to bring the cases, election officials who came to, who decided to investigate on their own what was happening in their counties when the machines weren't working properly. People have been hurt, people are being financially devastated. You can look at President Trump and say, "Well, he's got billions of dollars, who cares?" But if you look at the election director in Coffee County, who was fired and has to defend herself against this lawsuit, this RICO lawsuit, as well as a Trump campaign person who was called down here to interview Ruby Freeman, when Ruby Freeman wanted to confess to her sins, her crimes, he came down just to hear, he was asked to come down, because he's black, was asked to hear her testimony, what she wanted to do. Well, nothing ever came of that, except he was charged in this RICO case. Lawyers defending President Trump, including Jeffrey Clark, who was the acting Attorney General at the time. He is being charged here, they're trying to take lawyers' licenses away. Any lawyer that tried to stand up for election integrity. This is a sad situation, and none of that has been rectified. Now, President Trump has vowed that he will look into this, and I hope he does, because the 2020 election, it has not been adjudicated properly. People will say there are 60 cases that were dismissed, or that were heard and they were lost. That's not true. 60 cases were either not assigned a judge, or they were dismissed on technicalities, like latches or standing. Even here in Georgia, the Fulton County case was initially dismissed on standing. But then, later on, Sons of the Confederacy brought a lawsuit to the Supreme Court trying to defend, I believe, monuments, but I'm not really sure what the basis of that case was. But the Supreme Court said that every citizen in Georgia has standing to bring an election case. There should be no Georgia citizen bringing an election case, who said, you know, whose case is dismissed for no standing. That's a Supreme Court decision now here in Georgia. But still, that case has not been heard. So, but there are other cases also pending. The problem seems to come down to something I spoke to you before about, and that is the voting machines. Prior to 2020, the most vocal opponents to the voting machines were Democrat politicians and Democrats. You can find the recordings, Senate hearings, where they all claimed how unsecure they were, they were susceptible to hacking. And indeed, the research that I've been following, people who have looked into this since 2020, unfortunately, Republicans weren't listening to the Democrats before 2020. They started listening after, as you can imagine. And so they looked into it, and the machines are indeed insecure. In fact, they found that the passwords, general passwords for the Dominion system are present in normal text in the election management system. So they can be found pretty easily. They're also generic passwords. The only thing that shows up is admin, admin password, that's it. So anybody in all of the other states using Dominion systems can get those passwords, use those passwords to hack into this insecure system, which is run on Microsoft computers. The Microsoft computers, they haven't been updated since 2007. So I really want you to consider that we need to take action on this. And I know that the Secretary of State wants to update these systems at a cost of over $50 million. I wonder if you have heard yet what your share is going to be of that, because I really doubt that there will be federal assistance for that. I think that ship has sailed for getting federal assistance to update these machines, machines that should have been updated, really, before the 2024 election, but the Secretary of State refused. So costs may be coming down to you. I know the cost to continue to maintain these systems that are insecure, complicated. Most of our election officials don't even know how to run these. If they run into a problem, they have to call a Dominion tech. And do you think a Dominion tech is going to let them know what's going on or teach them how to see if anything's going wrong? No, the Dominion tech's going to cover up whatever problem they have, which is the history of what they've done in all the states where Dominion is working. So we're looking at more costs for the machines coming in. They'll assess you more, I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of update costs. I think it's time to get rid of them. I think there's going to be an impetus from the federal government to get rid of them, because they are just, especially once they were purchased by China in 2019. China is our biggest enemy. China is fantastic at hacking. China is probably hacking all of the security systems in our country now, from the federal government down. So, I just want you to see that that may be coming, to consider what we can do. There are laws. If counties just stood up, counties could take the option of, "I don't want to incur this additional cost, this additional complexity, this additional lack of security, I just want to do paper ballots." People will tell you, "Oh, it's more expensive." It's not more expensive, it's something we used to do. It's something we used to do. So just think about it. There are programs out there that can come and give you a demonstration on hand counting. Maybe consider putting it as a question on a ballot. Somebody said that Republican Party question not too long ago, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, maybe it was 2022, about whether people wanted hand-marked paper ballots. That the overwhelming majority did want it. They do want hand-marked paper ballots. Because, like I said, as of now, we can't even see the ballot. The election officials and the Secretary of State will not let citizens look at the ballots to do an audit. Nobody is allowed to do that, all across the nation. Why is that? If you're so secure about the election machines, let people do an audit and just prove it. But anyway.
My name is Bill Cray, I live at 1070 Symington Drive in the city of Watkinsville. Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments about this process with HB 581. And from my point of view, I'm a senior citizen, I'm on a fixed income. And I think that the legislature voted for it, and the exemption, and the citizens of O'Conne County overwhelmingly voted for it. And a comment was made was, by opting out, it would restore local control. And I'm thinking that, since the voters have spoken, and to not follow the will of the voters, it would be essentially maintaining local control of an oligarchy in the school board. So I'd like to say that.
Just for the record, this is the Board of Commissioners, and we are not opting out. We had a strategic planning meeting this morning, reviewed how the bill works. And there's no consensus to move forward, any opt-out, so we will not be opting out of House Bill 581.
Thank you. And so, but for another point about that, so I wanted to know, what kind of effect would it have? If they did opt out, what would the effect be on my tax bill? And my homeowner's insurance has gone up 59% in two years because of the inflation and the assessments have gone up. And I wanted to get an idea of what would be the effect if they had opted out on my tax bill? And so I asked that earlier this week to a school board member, but I wanted to get that information from the Tax Commissioner's office. And so I called over there, and I suggested, and the people are very polite, no complaints at all with them. But I suggested that it would have been helpful to have like a printed material for like a $300,000 house, if you opted out. If you didn't opt out, it would have this effect. If you opted out, it would have this effect. And I just wanted to mention that. And then the last thing, just a point of information that it's hard to hear. I don't wear hearing aids, I had my hearing tested, so that's not an issue. But if you would hold your, if you would move your microphones up in the upright position, and if you would sort of move in towards and speak into the microphones, I'd appreciate that. Thank you for all that you do for O'Conne County.
Thank you.
I'm Jean Barsanti from Oliver Bridge Road. And I just want to thank you very much for not opting out of that process. That really means a lot to me as a taxpayer, and I thank you for that. I'm also a member of the Parks Foundation, and so I can do a little ad here. We have a fun run coming up on March 17th to raise money for the Bogart Playground. And so that's St. Patrick's Day, so if you can remember, St. Patrick's Day, if you want to come out and support the foundation to help the Parks Department raise money for that new playground. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you do.
This is Chuck Williams, South O'Conne. Thank you all once again for hosting a town hall. I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, can you give us an update from a transportation standpoint, including but not limited to butlers crossing, roundabouts? I think there was an announcement the past few days about 316 improvements and how that process is going to be handled by G-Dot. Just a general transportation infrastructure update. Thank you.
So I just happen to have a worksheet that has all that on there, because we just talked about it this morning. So I will go through, so your Jimmy Daniel, Virgil Langford, O'Conne Connector, State Route 316 is a bundle project. Archer Western has been awarded that contract. Construction will start this year with completion in 2028. 441 from Morgan County to Bishop, which is a four-lane project. They expect construction to start on that in 2028. And 441 bypass of Bishop, there are no dates in that one yet. We do expect... We do expect, originally, they were saying 2029 they'd start design on that. Hopefully we get some conversation started soon. Dowsmill Road, Dowsmill Extension at 316 is an interchange. It's scheduled for right away, started last year. They're saying construction will start in 2025. McNuts Creek, which our last view of it was right in, right out. They're scheduled for right away in 2026 and 2027. Mars Hill Road at State Route 316 will be cul-de-sac. And that will occur in 2030. Julian Drive is still to be determined on what the intersection is going to look like. They're saying design will start this year, right away in '27 with construction in '30. There's a project on the books at 316 at the Georgia Ten Loop, that interchange there at Waffle House. That's scheduled to be totally rebuilt. They're showing design will start on that in 2030. Highway 15's bypass of Watkinsville. Design is underway there. Right away will occur in 2026. And then sometime between 2028 and 2051 will be the construction phase of that. That Route 53 at 441, where the project of Wyden Experiment Station will end. That's also designed, on the books, for having an interchange rebuild there. They're showing design won't start till 2047, so that's way, way out. Forty-seven, 2047, yes. The Experiment Station will be done on that date when we start. We also have the widening of State Route 53 from where the project ends now to Main Street. To be determined on all that. Also, US 78 from Walton County to Clark County will be paved this year. That's all the GDOT projects that they are funding completely. We do have several projects that we're working on in cooperation with GDOT, which means we have put money into these projects. State Route 53, Snowsmill at Rocky Branch, which is a roundabout. ER Snell has been awarded that contract. Construction will start this year and will be done in the first quarter of 2026. Malcolm Bridge Road at Ray's Church Road in State Route 53. Right away was authorized to start in December of last year, so we're working on that. We expect construction to start in 2026. Lot Felter Road over Barber Creek Bridge. Construction will start this year with completion this year. They're thinking they're going to get that done before the end of the year. We have a project on the books to connect Bishop Farms North to Bishop Farms South. All that's to be determined. That was really started in conjunction with UNG. That's kind of been put on hold. We're not sure, I don't think that project will stay at its same scope, so that will probably drop off here. And then the current project going on, from Butler's Crossing to US 441. My standard answer to anybody who asks me is 18 months. If you ask me in five months, I will still say 18 months. But they're saying the third quarter of 2025 is the completion date on that. I do know they were doing a lot of paving when the temperature got up over the last few days, so once they get some of that paving completed, they'll do another lane split, and I think that will improve things a good bit from where they are now. On totally county-funded projects, we have Snowsmill at Lane Creek, which is a roundabout. We will award the contract for that on November, excuse me, February 4th. And that construction will start this year and be complete by 2026. New High Shells at Union Church is in right away acquisition and final design. We hope to bid that in March with construction starting shortly thereafter with completion in 2026. We have three other roundabouts. All these are T-SLOSS-funded projects. Ascendale at Collin Ferry, Call Springs at Snowsmill and ACOG, and Morse Ford at Lane Creek. They're currently in design. We're pushing to have the design and right away acquired by the end of 2025. That way we have shovel-ready projects, so as money's collected through T-SLOSS, we'll go ahead and release those funds quickly. State Route 53, Call Springs, at Lot Felter Road. That project we talked about today, we have a concept for that. We originally had approached the project like we were going to get federal funding. But we had to select a design consultant based on some pretty interesting rules. As we've talked with GDOT, federal funding is probably not going to happen. State funding is very unlikely for that intersection as well. And honestly, what we've been through on these other two roundabouts on State Route 53 with federal money, I'm not sure we're going to do another federally-funded project with local cooperation again. What the board gave consensus on today was to, in our talks with GDOT, we would be able to do a project, a county-funded project with a encroachment permit, similar to what we've done with the roundabout out here, which we designed for roughly $100,000, built for $2.2 million, and did it in less than 12 months. And we've been working on these other two roundabouts for over four years without a piece of dirt moving yet. What we're going to do is find a design consultant to go get us to construction documents on that intersection. It'll be shovel-ready and ready to go when funds become available, whenever that might be. There's a current project on Miller's Lake Drive at Miller's Lake. This is in Jennings Mill. There's a culvert replacement going on there. That's kind of all the projects that we got working as far as roads go.
Dan Gee, Locklum Circle. Thanks for the work on Dawson Park. Looking forward to that. Hopefully it's before 2047 with the GDOT stuff.
That's the goal.
Question and comment. A question is, the trail sidewalk on Hog Mountain, it's great, love it. I'm going to be out there running, walking, whatever. But notice there's really tight buffer-wise. Is there going to be a curb, bushes, anything to kind of separate older pedestrians, runners, walkers like me from the street while UNG kids are on their phone driving down that road? Just a little concerned, and I got some experience building that stuff. Is there going to be any buffer?
What you see is what we got. It's very limited right away. You're one of the probably five people that have said anything positive about that project, so it's been it's been an interesting endeavor. We went through the whole, as I always talk about in comprehensive plans, about walkability and being healthy. We developed the Trail Master Plan, which had input from citizens and the rec board. We voted on that plan in this, well, as an open meeting. We started design in 2022, authorized design and construction, not a single comment. And I told somebody today that of all my years in politics, I've never been chewed out as much about anything other than that. So what I'm telling people is, message received.
I've chewed you out too, man. Well, it was great, you know, I'm going to use it. It's just heavy UNG traffic. As a father of two teenage drivers who aren't great drivers, hopefully it'll be good signage and enforcement by the sheriff. But I'm just a little concerned about, you know, younger and/or not great drivers, you know, coming over there. I would like to see, you know, most counties have tried to work that school system, try to work with the county government on safe routes to school, having sidewalks or whatever. Our county school board has not done so. Hopefully y'all can, whenever you can do sidewalks from county schools to neighborhood park, whatever. I know you're doing some, go work with it. So I'd like to see our school board do better with safer routes to school. My son actually would walk to the middle school, Oconee Middle School, and not many people did. But if you notice, you go in the morning, a bunch of kids from Dunkin' Donuts walking over to the middle school every day. Bless their hearts. And I'm glad they're walking and hopefully it's safe. But on Hog Mountain, just a little concern to drivers. Been coming to these meetings since you started them. John, you started them years ago, becoming almost all of them. I've learned to pick and choose when I'm going to complain. It's not directed towards you all. But speaking of GDOT, ER Snell, I've sent some emails. Man, they've been tough at Bishop Crossing, and they've been tough. I work with them, my current job, ER Snell and GDOT. Man, the list of stuff in our neighborhood in Clarny West and across the street in Stonebridge. If you know anything about road construction, now they're pulling out of forms for curbing and sidewalks. If you don't use a special magnet to pick up those nails. Myself, my wife, half her neighbors got tires and nails in the tires. Speeding through the neighborhood, really high speed, blocking one of the neighborhood entrances where school buses have to back up, beep, beep, beep. A quarter mile, that's gotten a little better, but try to talk to them. They're speeding through the neighborhood. Somebody knew my wife, she's in her 50s. Four young guys cursed her out for harassing them to slow down in the neighborhood. Man, they've been tough. ER Snell's been really difficult. Whoever the point person is from the county, whether it's a public works director, a roads person, one of y'all. I think it just carries a lot more weight when you deal with GDOT and/or ER Snell than just having my neighbors complain to them. They don't care, man. They don't care. And they've been rude, cursing my wife or whatever. She said, please don't say anything to them, but they've been difficult. I would hope, as we have all these GDOT projects going on, it's just someone is representing county residents with them. ER Snell just wants to get done. GDOT will at least listen to you. I'm not sure they do anything about it, but they've been really difficult. I've worked in government for decades. Man, horrible customer service, just horrible. It's just really bad. So as we have these other contracts, projects going on, whoever that point person is, there's nothing you can do about the actual project, but how they affect adjacent neighborhoods. MLK Day, did a little service project in the morning, came back. Silt all over the entrance to our neighborhood, bottleneck in our neighborhood. So I spent a couple hours just cleaning the entrance to Clarny West, getting all that silt where the road's going in and in and in, bottlenecks. Teenage drivers, not good drivers. It's bad. It's just from bad silt fencing by ER Snell. So please, whoever the contact is, I wouldn't come to you and complain if it wasn't really bad. We're letting 10 people in my neighborhood, nails in their tires, right when they start pulling forms. Man, it's been tough. We'll be done. I'm going to have a party for everybody when it's done. But please, we just need somebody in the county to represent residents when they're doing not the best job of it. Thanks.
Jeff Hood, Julian Court, off Julian Drive. I would have dressed better if I thought I was going to speak, but so just a couple of questions regarding what Chuck asked and you answered about transportation. And one is Julian Drive, because we live in that neighborhood that is at 316. Did you say that construction will begin in 2030 or 2028? I know you said it's to be determined.
They're saying they'll start design in '25, right away in '27, construction in 2030.
Wow, 2030? Okay, but they don't know what they're going to do, to be determined.
And all these change. Sometimes they get faster, sometimes they even get pushed out.
Okay. If, because I talked to a lot of our neighbors, and that's Deerbrook and Silverleaf, because it would impact both. Who should we reach out to? Are they, I don't know that they're still taking public comment, but
Whether they're not, closing that off, it reached high up in the chain of demand in GDOT, so I think we're going to be safe on not having some kind of access, whether it's right in, right out, or an access road or something.
Okay.
We just have to keep an eye on that website, Transforming 316. Kind of keep an eye on that, looking for opportunities to comment. That's been up the flagpole pretty high.
Okay, because you guys are still kind of our advocate as well, I would think.
Right. We had a pre-design meeting and they threw that out there. We had immediate comment that that wasn't going to work.
Okay. And I think you said McNut Creek is supposed to be right in, right out?
That's correct.
Now, was that kind of an issue with the Georgia State Patrol coming over there? I mean, they weren't happy about that, right?
Nobody's happy about that.
Okay. So what is the status of the Georgia State Patrol moving that office from Athens?
It was originally DDS. They had started their design process, then State Patrol decided to come out. And now GBI is coming also. All three. And it was, with that many agencies, they decided to turn the project over to the state building authority. So they're working on design and figuring out the cost share and that type of thing.
Okay, but the intention is for all three to
All three to come out there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We did talk a good bit about parks. On our tennis court expansion at OVP, we're at 90% design. Hope to have some good number of estimates on adding right now. The recently adopted master plan shows 24 courts at OVP. So once we see the pricing, we'll just see how many of them we can get. In Heritage Park, also about 90% design. Once we get some good construction numbers there, we'll move forward. We have money for OVP set aside in Sploss. We have money in capital fund for Heritage Park. And then the big one will be Dawson Park. We reviewed three different possibilities on the first phase of construction. The consensus has moved forward, adding six fields and parking for that first section of field building. So we'll keep you informed as we figure out the rest of the schedule.
Been a lot of chatter within the past week or so in the community about the apparent impending closure of the former Bell's Grocery Store, B&amp;T Foods, I believe it is now. And a lot of speculation about whether that is the precursor to something, quote, "else" coming in there without asking you, obviously, to breach any economic development issues that you're aware of. Do you have any insight on what may be happening on that corner of Bell's and that sort of whole little development right there?
There's a possibility to be a change of ownership of that shopping center. As far as what would come in that building, we have not heard anything about what might come in. But a possible ownership change is coming. We've got a couple more seconds, because we've been meeting since nine o'clock this morning. We do appreciate y'all coming out. Was everybody here for the previous meeting? All right. Y'all have a great evening. We'll see you at the next town hall.